Thank you. Can I have a roll call, Heather?
Dr. Charney? Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Dr. Winn? Mr. Nickel?
Here.
Mr. Richard?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell? And Mr. Panico?
Here. Can I have a motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of October 11th and October 25th, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion of second. Is there any discussion? Hearing uncovered. Roll call then.
Dr. Charney? Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
I'm staying. I don't think I was here. Student council report.
Kalia and Jasmine over there?
Excuse me. Will you do the 25th also?
If I was here, I'll go on it. Yes.
Did you move?
Yeah, I moved them both in the same motion.
Sorry. I thought it was just the 11th.
Nope.
Regular and exec.
All four. One shot.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Hi, I'm Kalia and I'm a part of the student council. With me tonight, I have Jasmine and will be giving you the report.
Winter sports have started. The varsity cheer team had their competition on Saturday, November 13th here in the fieldhouse. This Red Devil rally featured performances from several schools and local organizations. Our varsity team was proud to host such talented athletes. The varsity boys soccer had a soccer game on Thursday, November 11th. The game was held at Elizabeth and was part of the state tournament. The game ended in a shootout with Elizabeth taking the win. This past weekend was the 1112 play, Len Mie Tenner. Set in 1934, the play covers the high jinks of an opera.
Student council will be hosting a winter fest spirit week leading up to winter break. There will be spirit days like we did for homecoming week. The event will help connect the school and get students to push through the last few days before winter break. Some events will include writing New Year's resolution, any ugly sweater competition, and opportunity to get into the holiday spirit. Student council is looking forward to hosting some of our fan favorite spring events and will begin planning when we get back from winter break. Thank you for having us. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. We have no items. The correspondence, ladies and gentlemen?
The correspondence on file.
Correspondence on file.
Yeah.
Got it. So Dr. Moore, I'll turn it over to your, to you, for the superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you. So I just have a couple of items to share tonight as updates from our meeting last week and I do need to show a couple of things on the screen in a couple of minutes. It'll be quick. I did email all of you here at the board table a PDF of what I'm going to be sharing tonight. So if you're able to look on each other's screens or, you know, if you have your computer, I emailed you a PDF in your district email. So, just so you can follow along. The couple of things I just wanted to share tonight, we have a draft, our draft counseling theory of action that we worked on last week. I got some feedback that led to some adjustments. I'll share some of that with you this week. And if that's all looking good, then we'll, we'll start moving forward on chairing some committee work to write that policy as we continue to work on that board goal around counseling services. So more to come on that soon. I also just wanted to share tonight, and we'll talk more in reopening potentially tomorrow, we are seeing, you know, some increased virus activity throughout our school community and throughout the county. We aren't anywhere near where we were last year at this time, and I'm thankful for that. I'm also thankful for the fact that we still, even though we're seeing increased amounts of quarantine as a result of tighter quarters and lunch and those sorts of things, we're still not seeing students who are quarantined as close contacts getting sick. And so I'll knock on wood as I say that only because I'm thankful for that and hope that that continues. That's a testament to the hard work that everybody here, teachers, custodians, students, family, everybody, is doing. Our administrators out in the hallways making sure that masks are being worn properly. There's a lot going on to allow us to be able to celebrate that fact. We are open for business for the community as far as outside groups using our facilities. That is something, though, that if the spread of the disease continues to increase through the holiday season, that's something that comes under some examination. But we are pleased and we're hoping right now to be able to maintain that posture of being open for business. There are some limitations around some things. We aren't allowing right now indoor food sales or some things like that for our outside users, but that's really the limit right now of what, of what we're, the limit of the limits that we're putting on our outside users. If the situation with the virus continues to increase through the holidays, though, then we do have to look at spaces like our auditorium and some of our closer quarter spaces like our, you know, team rooms and locker rooms and things like that. And we might end up having to make some difficult decisions in how we utilize those spaces as we move forward through the winter. But like I said, we're doing well. You've seen, as I've reported to you and also reported to the community, a bit more cases over the past couple of weeks than we were having throughout most of October. But again, I do want to just draw it as a comparison to last year. We aren't where we were last year at this time. Last year at this time was when we started to see the spikes that would take us into the holiday season and then into the, into the early spring with a lot of concerns about whether or not we were going to even potentially get to red on the state's classification system. We are close to orange, but like I said, I don't think that's going to mean too much for us as long as our local conditions here in school with a lack of spread between kids are still, still what we're seeing. 99.9 some percent Delta variant is what we're seeing in the county. I just received that reporting today from the Department of Health that it's all Delta variant in the county right now. I would like to just jump up to the monitor real quick right now if you can locate, if it's easier for you to locate the email that I sent you. I wanted to update you on-
So math is one of the areas that we're most concerned about because it's so cumulative and that's where we worry about seeing some of the learning losses that we would have had from the past years. So it's also an area that's still very traditionally tracked. So it's easy to study from this kind of perspective, to see what's going on with kids in terms of their assignment to math classes and the opportunities that they have. One of the traditional kinds of analyses we do that I just want to share with you a little bit is we do what's called a pipeline analysis and we take a look at senior year math classes. And it's a, it's a difficult proposition, but we try to rate those classes based on how compelling those outcomes are for seniors in our system. So on a scale of zero to 10, no math in senior year would be a zero. You know, we like students to have four years of math even though the graduation requirement is three years. So no math would be a zero on our scale. Something like AP Calculus BC plus multi-variable calculus would be like a 10. And then, so things fall in between there. And we use that rating in the senior year to kind of stand in for a directional as how did each student's math experience here pan out by the time they got to their senior year? So this is a bit different from the simple question that you asked, Dr. Charney, which was, well, how many of these, how many students do we have in Algebra II? How many black students, Latin students do we have in pre-calc? We'll share more details when we get into student life and program, but I wanted to show you how we look at these kinds of directionals to get a sense of what the situation is. So if we take all of those scores for all of our kids, zero to 10, where are they in their senior year in math? And we start to average them together across different groups of kids, we start to see some things that, that we're talking a lot about now in terms of like, well, what do we do with this? So when you look at students across different demographic groups here, you see that all of our students average about a 4.4. So when we score all of their math outcomes in senior year, the overall average of our students is about a 4.4. And that's, you know, that's sort of pre-calc-ish is where that sort of lands. But you can see differences across different demographic groups in our system. And that's something that I showed tonight because of the way that it speaks to the data that Jessica Cangelosie-Hayes shared from the podium last week. When we go back now to ninth graders right now, how are they doing on their Start Strong assessments? How many of them are in Algebra I versus higher level courses? We see the beginnings of some of these discrepancies. We see the beginnings of some of those disparities in terms of placement. So we have work to do between freshman and senior year. And this is a kind of directional that can help us dig into numbers to determine, all right, well, where are the barriers here? But this echoes what we saw in our current ninth graders, which underscores that thought about how we need to continue to work with our K8s to understand, well, what's, what's happening because these disparities are starting to form in some of our K8 context? So this is kind of how we use some of these data in a directional's point of view, especially when you go into individual courses, some of the raw numbers of students get kind of small. Because, you know, how many free and reduced lunch kids are in this particular course at this grade level? You're sometimes dealing in smaller numbers than you can draw some conclusions from without this kind of directional analysis. I also wanted to share a bit more on the discipline concerns that I opened the conversation with last week. Yes, sir?
Could you give us an idea of the slide there? What does, I understand zero means?
Yeah.
No math. And 10 means differential calculus, fractiles, AP, everything. But what does a figure like 3.36 mean? Does that mean they've taken Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II? What's the correlation between that index and what they've taken?
Yeah. So it's a measurement of how far they've gotten by their fourth year in senior, in the senior year of high school. So what you're seeing with some of these lower numbers, you're seeing students who haven't risen out of Algebra I and either geometry, Algebra II, depending on which middle school they came from. As you start to climb up into the mid-range numbers, you're seeing different versions of pre-calculus and then also you're seeing some of our math courses that are alternatives to the more traditional track like discrete math and some others. And then as you start to climb up towards eight, nine, 10, that's where you're starting to get some of our honors and AP electives and also our core honors and AP courses. We'll talk more in student life and program as we map this out. I do want to share, though, that it's very difficult to assign those scores. And it's very uncomfortable to assign those scores because our thought about our math program is students take the math program that they need. Students have supervisors and teachers who do wonderful work with them to accommodate whatever the math needs their aspirations require. But when we see differences in terms of different demographic groups, we have to start asking, well, what's, what's going on? These differences correlate to other things that we have to start to ask questions about. And that's the conversation we're in right now. So there'll be a lot more discussion about this in student life and program and also as we move forward. Discipline. I worried about this with you a little bit last week. Here are our discipline incidents by grade level right now. Sort of as of the 19th, as of late last week, we've had 614 discipline incidents across our four levels to date so far this year. That's about 100 more than we had in the fall of 2019, which is the last time we had a normal fall. We also had five vice principals then. So, and I want to just point out, we've had additional number of discipline incidents with fewer staff to absorb them. Fewer students, but also fewer staff. Now, the thing I want to point out is the different colors here indicate what level. So level one, these are your basic violations like a cell phone, late to class, ID violation, those sorts of things, on up to sort of uncooperative behavior. You get up into level two, this sort of light orange color, and you're getting to some higher order issues. You're getting to more disrespectful behavior. And you go on up to three and four. Four is our top tier where we have assault and substance, sale of controlled dangerous substances on campus. Bias incidents are up there in tier four now as a result of the policy change you made last year. The thing I want to point out here is not so much that, and I was sounding an alarm about our freshmen and our sophomores, not so much that they have a ton more discipline issues right now. But I want to point out that the amount of discipline that is falling up into those higher tiers is a little bit, little bit thicker, particularly in the 10th grade. So when you look at 10th grade, you're seeing from orange, pink, and dark red, you're seeing a level of discipline activity that is time-consuming and troubling to work with. So we're seeing some increases there and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Also wanted to update, well, zeroing in just on tier one. When you take these lower portions of the bars out, this is late. That lightest blue is you're getting a discipline referral because you're late to class. When you take that lightest blue out, you start to see, again, at the top end of tier one, uncooperative behavior, disrespectful behavior, at the top end of tier one, you're seeing in our younger students more preponderance of those harder to deal with tier one discipline issues. So I don't know right now how this compares to a normal year. I can't answer that for you yet. But I know that Mr. Brand and his team and our teachers and folks doing incredible work with kids to try and help them socialize in what feels like a new environment for them in school and dealing with things that we don't traditionally deal with in school in terms of behavior. Tick-tock challenges where you're vandalizing a bathroom is not something, you know, that we typically deal with. Hibbs, I'll update you on Hibbs here, too. And this is of a little bit larger of a concern. Right now, we have 14 HIB cases. You haven't heard all of them yet? You haven't voted on all of them yet? We have 14 HIB allegations that are in process right now. Actually, I think it might be 15. Wait, Mr. Brand, is it up to 15? 17? Okay. So last year, we only had nine. Last year is sort of an anomalous year. But if you go back to our prior sort of regular years, skipping back before 2019, 20 even, 2018, 19 was our last full school year. We had 25 for the whole school year. Year before that, we had 17. It was a nice slower number, but we had 27 the year before that. That was the first year that I arrived. So we end up with close to 30 as a potential kind of number that you think, well, that's sort of what a normal year might be like. We're at 14 in November. The midpoint is February. So this is shaping up unless we have success in some of the actions that I'll talk about next, shaping up to be a banner year. The other thing I want to point out is the, and this, we talked about this last year. Again, these are just HIB allegations. These are not proven Hibbs. And that's an important thing to realize about these data. These are HIB allegations. This is kids bringing concerns to us. But it is a measurement of what's in the air and what are kids talking about. This gray bar up top in each year, those are all of the HIB accusations that have to do with non-bias-related distinguishing characteristics. Weight, hair, how tall or how short a student is. These aren't characteristics that speak to a student. Sexual identity, gender, race, religion, any of those things that we talk about, disability as bias-related. The bars below that, from blue on down to green, these are all HIB allegations that are based on distinguishing characteristics that are bias-related, potential bias incidents. And blue is race. Last year's tough. Last year, we had nine. Last year, you can't sort of factor into this. And you could even say 2019, 20 is hard to factor in because we were out in March. But if you look at this across, and again, just looking at these colorful bars down below, bias-related HIB allegations, you do see kind of a growing trend in the darkest blue, which is those that are related to race and ethnicity. That's a concern we're having. We're seeing it. We're seeing the use of racial slurs. We're seeing the fights and other things that are inspired out of, you know, concerns. We're seeing gender identity, intimidation and harassment going on. So these are the concerns that we have right now about the kinds of behaviors that we're seeing.
So that chart-
Go ahead.
-that you just showed is out of 100%.
Yes.
Those colors are percent, but you're talking in quantities, which makes the-
So the-
-correlation to the data difficult to visualize.
Well, I guess that what we're saying is the percentage of HIB allegations, the proportion of HIB allegations that are speaking to distinguishing characteristics that are related to bias is increasing. The proportion's increasing. So in a given year, the number of Hibbs that are related to distinguishing characteristics that are bias indicators, that proportion is growing out of the total HIB pool. Yeah, it's hard to, you know, we can look at it in terms of numbers.
But if we're talking percent, we can't talk quantity.
Right. Well, proportion. We're talking proportions.
Right.
So this year, we're talking about between sort of 56, 57% out of our 14 right now. Prior years, it's been lower. And in terms of race, we're talking about one to two to four to five or six, you know, so we're seeing that increasing in a way that just has us noticing the trend. Things that we're working on in response to this, and I know Mr. Brandt will share more in a month or two when we do our SSDS stuff. Restorative practice, Mr. Brandt and his team have been working a lot on how to account for the fact that our students have had a lack of socialization over the past couple of years and that they need some education potentially on how to correct their behavior. So we're working with some outside agencies, also working with law enforcement through the LEAP program to make sure that our students who are involved in some of the more severe types of things have programs on decision-making and other sorts of things that they can take advantage of to hopefully reduce recidivism. Counseling services, I am really, I feel blessed for the amount of layered counseling services that we have with our student assistance counselors, school-based, and our Care Plus partners and all of the work that we've been doing in training with Rutgers on race-based traumatic stress and some other things. We have a counseling services department that can offer a lot. They're still overwhelmed, but they can offer a lot in terms of support. And counseling, when we're looking at Hibbs and we're talking about counseling remediation, they can do an awful lot for us there. We have, again, some community partnerships that can help us do more. Today and yesterday, no, I'm sorry, today and tomorrow. Today and tomorrow, we've had folks going out into the health and PE classes, gathering them in the little theater to do some refresher HIB and discipline assemblies. That's been happening today, happened again tomorrow, primarily with ninth graders, but I think we were talking about the potential need to expand that to other students as well. Classroom instruction, we've had, and Mr. McIsaac talked a bit about when he was up here last week, some of the additional lessons that have been going on in English classes around identity and respect. And some of those things, we're building those out in other content areas as well. And in the coming month or two, I'll be asking for your approval to hire some staff members on some emergency curriculum projects to develop lessons around some of that stuff. And lastly, one of the things that we've talked quite a bit about, and we talked in student life and program as well, is the potential concern that our ninth and 10th graders are not plugged into our clubs and activities in the way that they ought to be. So we're working on activities fairs and some other things for the coming weeks so that we can get a little bit more overt about the opportunities that are available for plugging in for our ninth and 10th graders. So that's where we are now. I wanted to give you a bit more information. I promised you last time a bit more information on some of those concerns and wanted to share that with you tonight just to give you a little bit more of a window into the kinds of things that we're seeing. Any questions for me on any of that stuff?
Jeff, do we, the tier one discipline, you said tardies.
Yeah.
Is that, is there a warning system if you're tardy one? It's not calculated in that or is it just a blanket? What does our code of conduct say about that?
How many tardies?
They, they, I think a couple of tardies could be a warning and then that's okay with that. I'm not exactly sure of those numbers. Do you think it's three times or is that a warning?
Yeah, the warnings may be included. So it's an interaction with the discipline system, either through a warning or through an actual like extended detention or something along those lines.
So, but what's your sense, do our teachers remand these, what I'm going to call tier one offenses to administration or do they deal with it themselves? I mean, do they try to coach students about, you know, you gotta get here on time or a personal detention or what's, give us a sense of what tier one discipline is?
Well, depending on where it fits along that spectrum, it could be something along the lines of some administrative or extended detentions, or it could just be a warning. But it is, again, it's an interaction with the discipline system. Teachers, when they have a late, they're reporting that to the main office through Aspen, which is then sort of calculating a total. And when it reaches a certain total, then it kind of triggers a discipline response like a detention or something along those lines.
So, but that's not just Aspen, you're saying. It could be late to class, well, Aspen-
Yeah. All of those are logged in Aspen, though. All of this data is coming out of Aspen. So if there's informal-
So that doesn't let the teacher mitigate it then? If it's logged in on Aspen, then it becomes administrative function-
Yes.
-after it gets to a certain-
Right. And so that begs the conversation about restorative discipline on the tier one level as well. And that's, that's part of our conversation, too, not just how we look at restorative discipline at the top levels of infraction, bringing a student back into the community after they've some, done something very, very serious. You know, we also have to look at, how is this playing out as a zero-sum game for kids on the lowest levels of discipline? What is the flexibility that we have to sort of guide kids to better decisions right there in the moment rather than putting them through the system? And you'll recall, last year, I was showing that there were some disparities in how that discipline was playing out through the system as well, that certain kids were having more interactions with the system than others. So we're, we're looking at restorative practice on both sides of the spectrum there as a potential answer to being different in terms of how we respond to a kid who is late to class or has an ID violation or something sort of on the lower level like that. There, and there are teachers who do excellent work there that we just need to listen to and figure out if that's something that we can make the rule for everyone in terms of how they're working with kids to repair some of those minor type infractions.
Jeff, where does the engagement of upperclassmen fit into this intervention model? As we all know, peer influence is a pretty-
Yeah.
-pretty strong influence for some of these kids, our athletes, our clubs, our honor societies. How do we engage our juniors and seniors to set good examples and encourage our younger kids to set good examples?
Well, I think that we have a couple of organizations already in place that we need to leverage a little bit more toward that sort of thing, whether it's the student athlete leadership team, or we have sources of strength, we have student council. These organizations are there. They're not used to functioning in a mentorship capacity in a formal way. And that's what we need to, we need to visit a lot more deliberately is how do we bake mentorship formally into, into those situations? And our upper-class students, our 11th and 12th graders are always sort of mentoring, but I think sometimes, too, some of the behavior that's going on in school is just, you know, don't have time for that, right? You know, so I think we have seniors and juniors who want to get through their day and we have to be more deliberate in inviting them into these mentorship opportunities. Sources of strength, student council, student athlete leadership team, and also our affinity groups where we have Black Student Union and Pulse and some others. These are areas where we can be a lot more deliberate with our older students mentoring and coaching our younger students.
Yeah, even the honor societies-
Yeah.
-you know, have typically the upperclassmen.
That's a good point, too.
Pure leadership club, you know, there's a lot of, I think, opportunities with the upperclassmen to engage them with some of the younger students.
What we need and what we talk about often is how, I'm pointing to Mr. Brandt, not pointing it, is how, yeah, Jasmine, come on, come fix this. How we string them together into a consistent- How we string them together into a consistent approach to this. I mean, each club and organization can mentor its younger students, but that's not consistent across the whole school as mentoring of 11th and 12th graders, of 9th and 10th graders. And so that's where Student Council can play an important role as a glue to bring everything together. Sources of Strength is another organization that can play an important role as a glue to bring everything together into some common practices for allowing that mentorship to flow. So training up kids on that mentorship and then allowing them to turnkey it out through those organizations is part of the thought here, definitely. And just getting ninth and 10th graders in on our clubs and activities is a sort of threshold step there as well. Sure?
Just following on to your question, we have these organizations. They have the potential for, within their organizations, incentivizing their members to become mentors or not. I'm wondering whether there's something we might do as a school-wide incentive, both to tie these together and to somehow motivate these kids to get, you know, because some of them will be very good at this, and they just, well, you know, why should I do it? It's my senior year, and blah, blah, blah. Even though there would be assets for this, I'm just wondering whether there's some kind of program or something we can tie together, or some, I hate to use the word reward, but incentive of some kind that we could explore as to what might be. Let the students even advise us.
Well, many of these students have service hours.
Yeah.
For National Honor Society, different honor societies, so, you know, you could certainly offer that.
That's an idea, too. That's an idea.
And there are districts, when we had our strategic planning conversations a couple of years ago, there was talk even of, do we talk about a service requirement for graduation?
That would be an idea.
And that's been something that has come up at different times from the Department of Education through different administrations there, but it's, this is how we could certainly embed that into the fabric of what we're doing with students being mentored and then learning to become mentors and then being mentors. I mean, that that's just something that you do here, either through all the different organizations that you belong to, sports and clubs. In a consistent way, this is how Hundred and Central does mentoring, or through a much more blatant kind of, everybody's going to go through this as a separate program, as a course, as a required ninth grade, 11th grade, 12th grade experience. But consistency would be important to us there. Do we have a common approach to mentoring across all these different opportunities to make sure that kids are going about it the same way as mentors and also benefiting from it and identifying their needs and strengths and all those things as ninth and 10th graders? So these are definitely, those aren't quick responses. You know, a quick response is, can we just get kids in clubs? But as we move forward from where we are and say, what do our students, what are they going to show us over the next several years that they need help with? Then that can certainly be a much more formal kind of program that we would be eager to build, I think. Thank you. Yes, Steve?
Is there a sense of urgency around this in that you're going to be losing the pre-COVID students in the next 18 months? So if you're trying to maintain the culture that existed pre-COVID and need those students to mentor, it feels like there should be a sense of urgency around a lot of these initiatives.
Yeah. Well, and we have, right now, it's a lot of urgency around just kind of responding to some of the concerns that we're seeing in terms of the behavior. We expected some behavioral concerns. We weren't expecting some of the HIB-type concerns that we were seeing. And I'm just going to be frank, the schools across the state are all kind of comparing notes on that, saying, we weren't seeing this coming. We were expecting disengagement in class. We were expecting some sort of disrespectful-type behavior, some disengaged behavior, but we weren't expecting the interpersonal stuff that we're seeing between kids. And so there's urgency there. But the mentoring thing, you know, we've come back to several times in our conversation so far, we just have to figure out how to get that off the ground in a way that leverages the strengths of our current 12th graders, who, yeah, who are quite wise coming out of the other end of this COVID experience. So I appreciate, yeah, there's urgency in this no matter what because these are the students who are all in front of us right now. So there's just that urgency of, these kids are here right now, and we can't waste any time in terms of addressing some of the interactions that they're having between each other and some of the harm that those interactions are causing. All right. Anything further? We'll talk a lot more as we move forward, and especially as we start to implement some of these things, and we'll have more to talk about here in Student Life and Program as well, as we come back in on some of the finer questions around some of this stuff for later reports out to the board.
Okay. That concludes my report. That's all I've got.
Thank you, everybody. Yes.
Does he make a short?
That's me. I'm done.
All righty. That means now is the time of the agenda for any public comment, for items on the agenda. If you wish to speak about any items that are action items tonight on the agenda, please step up to the microphone, state your name, sign in, and speak. We ask you to speak for no more than five minutes, unless everybody who wants to speak has been heard. I don't know what's speaking. All right. Moving on. We have an organizational item, which is the Virtual and Remote Emergency Instruction Program Policy. It's P2425. Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion of seconds, or any discussions? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. This is an action meeting, so we already had updates from the committee, so we're just going to go through and get the approvals out of the way. Can I have a motion on H1 through H3, which is Student Life and Program?
So moved.
Have a motion of second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. I1 through I7, which is O and C.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second, any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote?
Dr. Richard? I'm sorry. Dr. Chaney?
Yes.
Charney? I'll get it. Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. J1 through J13, personnel.
So moved.
Including the addendum, which is the sidebar, does it have a number?
No, that's not a number, but that would be J14.
J1 through J13, including the addendum sidebar.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of the second, is there any discussion?
Question, discussion. Are we, we are saying that we can assign teachers to substitute or give up the prep period. Does that violate any aspects of the contract?
No. No, it's a common practice across districts to offer a stipend for that. We have always relied on volunteerism for staff to do that, but we've really reached the limits of that. We had a stipend for them last year during COVID, and this revives that practice and also, I think, brings us kind of up to the level of where other districts are with this.
I understand that, but is, what it's saying is that we can assign them that. Still pay them the stipend, but we can assign them the duty.
Yeah. In the lack of enough volunteers, we would be able to make assignments. We didn't run into that too many times last year, if at all, so we're hopeful that we won't be in a position where we have to assign people. We think we'll get enough volunteers that will be able to cover the need. Yeah, but there's no violation of the contract there. The prep period is, you know, as long as we're paying them for that time, we can take that under these kinds of terms.
Thank you.
No further discussion, have a roll call vote, please.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Any additional business or board comments this night?
Dr. Moore, we didn't move the HIB motion.
Oh, do we have to go back and move to HIB motion? We do.
Oh, I skipped it?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Good call. Can I have a motion to affirm HIBs, HC2122, 006, 007, 008, and 009?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion of the second, have a roll call vote.
Dr. Charney?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
And Mr. Panico?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Apologies for missing that, folks.
No, thank you.
Can I have, now is the time for public comment, for any items on or off the agenda. If you wish to speak, step up to the podium, sign in, state your name, and speak. Any items on or off the agenda, maximum of five minutes per person, please. All right, hearing none, I'm going to close public comment. Now we're going to adjourn to executive session. Well, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session for matters of HIB?
So moved.
For approximately 30 minutes, with no action to be taken, we return. I heard a motion, did I get a second?
Second.
Motion of the second, all clear?